City Council at 7:00 PM and I'll call the morning meeting to order. We'd like to let you know that Meeting Accessibility Services and American Disability Act notice that Kent Taylor Civic Hall is accessible to persons with disabilities. A request for an interpreter for the hearing impaired or for other accommodations for persons with disabilities should be made at least 48 hours before the meeting to the city recorder, 503-435-5702, or claudia.cisneros@mcmindleville.org.gov, which can also be found on our website. I would like to call on Counselor Payne to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Can we do a roll call really quick? Sorry.
Yes, may we get a roll call really quickly?
Counselor Geary.
Here.
Counselor Minkie.
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Here.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Peralta.
President via Zoom.
Counsel President Garvin.
Here.
And interim Mayor Drabkin.
Here.
Thank you.
Counselor Payne.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. We are now going to have proclamations. We're going to start with our Latinx Heritage Month proclamation, and I'd like to first call on Jackie Quiro's, a library assistant, to read our proclamation in Spanish, and then I will follow in English. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Decretto, designación del periodo del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre como el mes nacional de la herencia hispana, por cuanto en el mes nacional de la herencia hispana se celebra a la comunidad latina y se destacan sus innumerables logros, y por cuanto la conmemoración comenzó en 1968 como la semana de la herencia hispana durante la presidencia de Lyndon B. Johnson, y se promulgó como ley federal el 17 de agosto de 1988 para invitar a la población de los Estados Unidos a celebrar este momento con ceremonias, actividades y programas, y por cuanto muchas personas latinoamericanas tienen sus raíces en las culturas de los pueblos indígenas de América, incluidos los arwaks, los aztecas, los incas, los mayas y los tainos, y algunos tienen sus raíces en ancestros de España, México, el Caribe, América Central, América del Sur y África, y por cuanto el periodo del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre se reconoce como el mes nacional de la herencia hispana, un momento para honrar y celebrar las formas invaluables en que la comunidad latina contribuye al cumplimiento de los objetivos en común de McMenville, para celebrar la diversidad de la cultura latina y para trabajar con él, fin de tener una sociedad más fuerte e inclusiva para todas las personas, y por cuanto el 15 de septiembre es importante como fecha de inicio del mes nacional de la herencia hispana porque es el aniversario de la independencia de Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras y Nicaragua de España. México y Chile celebran su independencia el 16 y 18 de septiembre, respectivamente, y por cuanto la comunidad latina es una parte importante de la población de McMenville e influya en la estructura social de toda la comunidad, con contribuciones a los artes, los negocios, los restaurantes, el liderazgo cívico, la educación y la cultura general de McMenville, y por tanto yo, or Remy Drabkin, alcalde interimo de McMenville, decreto por la presente que el periodo del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre de 2022 se designe de la siguiente manera, mes nacional de la herencia hispana. So, take it away, Remy.
Thank you so much, Jackie. This is a designation of September 15th to October 15th as Latinx Heritage Month, whereas National Latinx Heritage Month celebrates the Latinx community and highlights its countless achievements, and whereas the observation began in 1968 as Hispanics Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was enacted into federal law on August 17, 1988, calling upon the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities and programs, and whereas many Latinx Americans trace their roots to the cultures of indigenous peoples of the Americas, including the arwaks, the aztecs, the incas, the maya and tainos, and some trace their roots to ancestors from Spain, Mexico, Caribbean, Central and South America and Africa, and whereas September 15th to October 15th is recognized as National Hispanic Heritage Month, a time to honor and celebrate the invaluable ways Latinxes contribute to McMenville's common goals to celebrate a diverse Latinx culture and to work toward a stronger and more inclusive society for all, and whereas the 15th of September is significant as a starting date for Latinx Heritage Month because it is the anniversary of independence from Spain for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras and Nicaragua, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence on September 16th and 18th respectively, and whereas Latinxes are a significant part of McMenville's population and influence the fabric of our community with contributions to McMenville's arts, businesses, restaurants, civic leadership, education and overall culture, and now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, interim mayor of McMenville, do hereby proclaim the period between September 15th and October 15th, 2022, as Latinx Heritage Month, in witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand this 27th day of September in the year 202022. We will now be having a proclamation for May Day, and so whereas manufacturing and traded sector companies make a very significant contribution to the national, state and local economy, and whereas our community is fortunate to be the home of nearly 100 world-class manufacturing and traded sector companies featuring a multitude of products made in the city of McMenville, and whereas these companies add to the vitality and prosperity of our community by employing over 2,000 people in McMenville alone and nearly 6,000 employees throughout Yamhill County, manufacturing has a revenue impact of 320 million in the city of McMenville and nearly 900 million in revenue impact throughout Yamhill County. Now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the interim mayor of the city of McMenville, do hereby proclaim October 7th, 2022, as McMenville May Day in conjunction with the National Manufacturing Day, in witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMenville to be affixed this 27th day of September 2022. And I see we have, well hello. Please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Drabkin. My name is Patty Herzog. I'm the executive director of the McMenville Economic Development Partnership, and thank you for the proclamation for Manufacturing Day, which will be taking place on the first Friday in October, which I believe is October 7th. So thank you for that. Next slide, please. A short presentation, just to give you an update on what we have been doing at MEDP for the last year. This does cover a brief time where my partner in crime, our deputy director Heather Hadley Blank, was leading the ship solo between the months of September and January, and then I started in January, and here we are today. It's gone by so quickly and it's been an honor to be here so far. Next slide, please. So just a refresher on our strategic priorities and our mission. We work on these four strategic areas of focus, business retention and expansion, business attraction, workforce development, and then innovation and entrepreneurship, and our goal is to continue to advance the strategies that support business in McMenville and create great jobs, and those jobs are living wage jobs in our community. Next slide, please. Just a picture of our board of directors, and we're so lucky to have one of your staff members, Heather Richards, the Community Development Director, on our board, as well as John Dietz from Mack Water &amp; Light, Teresa Smith from Citizens Bank, Mike Morris, who's on the chamber board, and also a realtor in town, and Devin Paola, who is the owner of Solid Form. Next slide. This is a slide that kind of tells the story of the Economic Development Partnership landscape in the region. Around this, our sustaining funding partners, the city being one of those, is key to the work that we do at MEDP, as well as McMenville Industrial Promotions, which is in 2023 celebrating 70 years of supporting economic development in McMenville. What I think is very unique about the partnership that we have here is that as we work with businesses in our community, you will see on a regular basis Business Oregon and SEDCOR and MEDP, so our businesses are getting support from the state, the region and locally in our community, and in my career, I haven't seen that happen in any other place. So one of the advantages of the economic development in our community. Next slide, please. A little focus on our business retention and expansion efforts over the past year. We do business engagement on a regular basis, connecting resources to our businesses to meet their needs and collaborating with our partner. Next slide. Some stats on our engagement so far. Obviously, 2019 and 2020 is an anomaly with the pandemic really restricted a lot of business activity, but as you can see, this year, we're continuing to see some rapid growth and business engagement with 100 leads that we've been working on. Next slide, please. This is the breakdown. You might notice that these numbers don't exactly add up to 100. That's because some of these categories overlap where they're being counted into categories. We get quite a number of leads from the state with 35, and then our retention and expansion efforts at 21, and then direct traded sector businesses, and other would be like retail, those that are not traded sector businesses or traditional manufacturing. Next slide, please. On our business attraction side, this is a few of the projects. If it says Project Stamper or Project Alfred, those are state Business Oregon leads. Some of the other companies that you see here, we've been working with MIP on one of their last large parcels available in the industrial district that is looking, that it might be sold to a construction company from out of the area, and then we have a semiconductor chip component startup that's looking at some property that Mack Water &amp; Light owns, and then two businesses at the bottom here, Cutting Edge Metals has shown really remarkable. They wanted to set up a machine shop on their property in the county, but now they're located in Bunce Village and really already outgrown that facility and are working with MIP to expand. Phoenix Solutions is another really exciting company in the aerospace sector. They have unmanned aerial vehicles, and they are a semifinalist for the Ben Venture Conference right now, which is really exciting. Next slide, please. On workforce development, I will tell you, when we meet with companies, the top two concerns that we hear from them are workforce development and supply chain issues. In that, we have formed a workforce development partnership, and for what I've been told is the first time, we've circled all the partners interested in workforce development. We have the school district, Chamecuda, Lynnfield, industry partners and others at the table. Willamette Workforce Partnerships is at that table as well, and at our next meeting, Unidos and YCAP will be joining that as well. We also were able to start the quarterly business roundtable meetings. We will have our second one on Thursday, where Counselor Chenoweth and Heather Richards will be giving a presentation on the Innovation Campus to those business leaders. And then another successful year of the McMenville Works Program, where 15 interns had the opportunity. Very happy to say that one who was even hired by a company is continuing to work with them today. Next slide, please. Innovation development, this is an area that has really picked up a lot of exciting things. We've had over six presentations with Counselor Chenoweth and Heather Richards and myself to different community groups in Newburgh and groups around McMenville, and then we also have worked closely with our partners at SEDCOR to receive a Business Oregon Planning Grant for a regional innovation hub. I will also add to that that both SEDCOR and MEDP are also partners in Business Oregon's Center for Industry Excellence, and we will be working with OSU on their food sustainability grant. I mentioned the quarterly business roundtable, and then Launch Mid Valley. Heather Hadley Blank has been working with a committed group of community leaders on the BizCon Conference, which will be held on Saturday, October 1st, so please spread the word about that, and then the monthly Coffee Club for Startups and a Happy Hour that was held in August. Next slide. Our focus at MEDP, we really want to get more folks involved and participate. As I mentioned, our business roundtables that have kicked off, we're also forming an advisory council on top of our board of directors that we have. Our goal is to be solution focused and really build on a shared vision for sustaining great jobs in McMenville. Next slide. And just a sincere gratitude to the city council, to McMenville Industrial Promotions, to Mack Water &amp; Light for your sustaining partnership. Without your commitment to our organization, Heather and I wouldn't be able to do the work that we're doing in supporting companies, and also thanks to our companies that are part of our investor circle, so thank you for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything that you do for the city and the region. It's much appreciated. I'd like to now invite up Bill Barak, president of the Oregon International Air Show, to present.
Thank you. Mayor Drabkin and council members, appreciate your time tonight. We, on behalf of the board of directors of the Oregon International Air Show, we wanted to come present a few items from the United States Air Force team that was with us here last month, the Thunderbirds, and also express our appreciation and our commitment to the city and continuing to work forward to future years to bring a wonderful event to town each August or September, depending on what year. The event went off fairly smoothly, we'll say. We did have a couple heat-related issues that our folks had to, our medical folks had to transport, and I see, I was looking at the weather, this weekend is going to be 86 degrees. We're exactly one year from the Blue Angels flying overhead, and it's going to be 86 this year, so hopefully we're close to that next year and the weather cooperates with us. But the event was successful, and that's no in small part to the commitment and the leadership of your two department heads in particular that I'd like to mention, and we have, I think Chief Scales is on Zoom, I think I saw, but we do have a litho specifically for Chief Scales and as well as one for the police department that we'd like to leave with staff. Their leadership in, from a security perspective and the activity that occurs prior to the event, most people have no idea, but to have an event and have it safely and have the leadership of someone like Chief Scales is a pleasure to work with, and I wish he was here to, sorry, shake his hand, but you appreciate him. And likewise with fire department. We like to say hey, or we plan that they are simply spectators, and we hope that that's all they are all weekend, but this year we had a couple heat-related issues, and we appreciate their professionalism and the way in which they work with us to execute this event. As you know, we work in two different communities, but for those of you that don't know, I'm also an airshow performer. I travel all over North America for that matter, so I get to work with a lot of different departments all over the country, and to have a fire department that approaches our safety the way they do is, we don't take that for granted. So Chief Lightford, we have one specifically for you and one for the department as well that we do want to say thank you for your leadership. You were our point person all year, and everything was smoothly, even though all of us were struggling, we were coming out of the pandemic, things were just loosening up as we rolled into the summer, and you certainly made that, made things very easy for us. And then I don't think your airport manager contractor is here, but we do have one for airport management for them as well. Working with the folks out there at the airport, very supportive, we sort of come in and just take over the airfield for about four or five days, and we appreciate their support as well. And outside of that, we do have our annual airshow coin that we'd like to present to the council, if I may.
Yes, and thank you. May I ask the chief and members of our fire department to come up and receive these acknowledgements first?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One. Thank you. We appreciate the support and we enjoy working with you.
Oh, yes, appreciate it. I made it after on my bike. Did it.
Bill, all right, give one maybe to Remy Purcell.
Oh, yes, we have a counselor on Zoom this evening, but thank you. And Chief Scales, would you like to add anything at this time?
No, I just apologize, I was under the weather today, so I stayed home, but I appreciate everything Bill and his group does and do for this event. Outstanding partners.
Thank you so much. I also do a lot of events in my other line of business, and we always say that when an event goes off as smoothly as this one did, it looks effortless, but we all know it's not. It takes a tremendous amount of planning and preparation, and so thank you for all of that and for being a great partner with our departments.
Again, it's not to be understated, McMenville in 2019, when the United Kingdom sent the red arrows to travel North America, they stopped in some incredible cities like New York, Chicago, LA, Toronto, and McMenville. So I'm proud of the fact that we brought them to Oregon and they got to come see this wonderful city.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
We are going to continue recognizing those who contribute to making our city tick in a wonderful place, and I would like to turn the microphone over to our finance director, Jennifer Quayar, to introduce our budget committee for recognition.
So we just, in recognition of the extraordinary labors that the budget committee took on starting the summer of last year, we wanted to make a public acknowledgement and thank you for that. It looks like there aren't any members of the budget committee here present with us. I'm not sure if there's anyone.
Debbie's on Zoom.
Debbie's on Zoom.
Oh, Deb and Dee's on Zoom. There's a few on Zoom.
Okay, super. So do you want me to continue with full remarks, or are you?
Please, continue with your full remarks.
Okay. So last year, the budget committee began its work in July of 2021, representing the community voice in two unique projects, evaluating and making recommendations on sustainable resources that the council might consider to address the persistent general fund budget gap, as well as weighing in on the principles, underpinning the allocation of one-time American Rescue Plan Act dollars, and also considering projects that the city might invest in. In a typical year, the budget committee would have received their budget book in April of 2022 and would have participated in important deliberations, lengthy deliberations in May, but this group was starting their work, goodness, 10 months ahead of the normal cycle. So in the run-up to the current 2022-23 budget cycle, our budget committee were active participants in multiple meetings and were invited to attend many other meetings that were on related topics such as our core services discussions and when other revenue options were up for debate and consideration by the council itself. And so the budget deliberations and recommendations throughout the last year have really been crucial in our ability to make the best possible choices for the city in terms of securing sustainable resources in a way that has the least possible impact on the most vulnerable members of our community, and for all of that work, the city would like to recognize that service over the last 15 months, and we appreciate your contributions and time volunteering. So that's.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Excellent. Yes, we do rely on over 1,000 volunteers here at the city of McMenville in order to make everything work, and that's everything from those of us you see seated before you right now to our budget committee members, our planning committee members, many of our coaches through our Parks and Rec Department, through all areas of our city, we rely on volunteers, and sometimes the lift is heavier than anticipated, and that was certainly the case for our budget committee members this year. A sincere thank you from all of us for putting in that time and bringing forth your voices and your experience and your knowledge and helping us move forward through what was a challenging budget cycle. Thank you. We're now going to go to comments from community members. Tonight, I'll read this portion, and then I'll remember to actually ask for comments afterwards. So any interested members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom to request to speak, and once your time, your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic, or you may also send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudia Cisneros, and we will announce you, and if you're in council chambers and would like to submit comment, we have sign-up cards that can be turned in also to Claudia Cisneros. Do we have anyone signed up to comment this evening?
No one has signed up yet.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to provide public comment this evening? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to provide public comment this evening? And is there anybody on the phone? There's nobody on the phone. Thank you. I'd like to hear from our counselors, reports on their committee and board assignments. Counselor Peralta.
was a challenging budget cycle. Thank you. We're now going to go to comments from community members. Tonight, I'll read this portion and then I'll remember to actually ask for comments afterwards. So any interested members are invited to provide comments and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom to request to speak. And once your time, your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Or you may also send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, and we will announce you. And if you're in council chambers and would like to submit comment, we have signup cards that can be turned in also to Claudia Sisneros. Do we have anyone signed up to comment this evening?
No one has signed up yet.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to provide public comment this evening? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to provide public comment this evening? And is there anybody on the phone? There's nobody on the phone. Thank you. I'd like to hear from our counselors on, reports on their committee and board assignments. Counselor Peralta, may we start with you?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Can folks hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks. Really quick report. The Council of Governments Executive Committee met last week. We did a fair amount of work that wasn't terribly relevant to the city of McMinnville. The, the historic landmarks meets this Thursday to discuss the proposed new hotel downtown, so just flagging that for the public. And that's all I've got for the report tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Payne?
Thank you, Mayor. The landscape review committee met last week and I'm grateful to Planning Director Heather for stepping in and educating me on a lot of what I didn't know. It was a productive meeting and the committee has reviewed their code again and are waiting for some response on their draft and have some notes to consider in the completion of their draft.
Thank you, Counselor Menke.
Okay, the YCAP report for this month. The executive director along with other key YCAP team members continue to meet with partners to plan and prepare for the openings of two navigation centers, Any Door Place, McMinnville, and Any Door Place, Newburgh. They are still in the planning stages, but project that services will be available for Newburgh by June 30th, 2023, and no later than February 24th in McMinnville. The turnkey project, four households have successfully moved into permanent housing. Two households currently have Section 8 vouchers and are awaiting inspection of their new home to transition into stable housing. An updated maintenance request system is now in place, allowing for better follow-up from each partner as the work being completed. An updated orientation process and procedure is almost completed in the hope it will be in place by October 1st to allow for a clearer path for staff and participants on successfully moving into housing. Youth outreach, 61 youth made 259 trips to Youth Outreach drop-in center, that would probably be in Newburgh. 11 runaway and homeless youth were served by Youth Outreach. Four homeless youth were sheltered in the transitional living program. Youth Outreach MAC, YCAP is currently reviewing bids and quotes from contractors who will complete the renovation on space that will serve as a second drop-in center in McMinnville. We expect to have the space open by the end of 2022. Additionally, we have hired a staff member who is training at our Newburgh drop-in, so they will be ready to manage and oversee the day-to-day operations of the new drop-in when it opens. Energy services. See if I got the right page here. The American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds are closing out as of the end of September with no roll, roll-forward extension. Energy Department team members are focused on the final weeks of spend-down procedures. Weatherization contracts were finalized and sent out to contractors for review and signatures in early September. Updates were delayed until team members attended an Energy Out West Conference the first week of August to receive their latest updates from the US DOE team members and led sessions at the conference. In the food bank, as previously reported, the senior center harvest to home distribution started up on Thursdays during August for the first time since pandemic began. The first week started with 52 patrons and ended with 124 in the final event day. George Fox students recently volunteered for repacking the bulk of quick-rolled oats into smaller quantities in the mezzanine and this marks the first group volunteer activity since December 2019. Portland Mechanical has reported that a freezer and cooler components have been ordered and are expected to be shipped within the next few weeks. The cooler freezer portion in the YCAP building has been down for a couple of months now and hopefully they will have that up by the middle of next month.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Economic Vitality Committee canceled for this month. Parkway Committee met on the 15th, basically prepping for change in legis, potential changes in legislation, legislators that we'll be reaching out to and securing funding and the like that could happen during this election cycle. Realizing that the costs for everything we're building have gone up tremendously, so the bypass costs are also going up tremendously as a result. And so they're working to ensure that they have secured the funding necessary to continue the bypass forward. That's my report.
Thank you. Counselor Gary?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Council President Garvin?
Thank you, Mayor. The Airport Commission hasn't met since our last council meeting, but we are coming to the end of our vacancy application window. We have one current vacancy as well as two expiring terms. So those close this Friday, the 30th, at 5:00 PM. I'd also add the budget committee has two expiring terms and one vacancy that has the same application window that closes this Friday. So if anybody is listening and is interested in any of those, please reach out to myself or other counselors. We can bring you up to speed on it and you can pull an application off the website. YCOM, we had a meeting. Nothing real of substance to report there. It was just business as usual. The Fire District, we'll get briefed on that a little bit later, but I did want to call out that the volunteers will have their pancake feed two Sundays from now on October 9th. And the union, myself and some volunteers will also like to staff informational booth on the Fire District. So if any other counselors want to be involved in that, reach out and happy to have help on that. Visit McMinnville, I had my first board meeting with them. That's a two-hour meeting. Lots of information to intake on that meeting. We got briefed on the growth of the website and the reach that has and how much that's organically grown just off exposure from our new partners downtown and restaurants and between Humble Spirit and Okta and everything else that's happening on Third Street and how that's driven just organic search volume for the city of McMinnville and Visit McMinnville. We also got briefed on how we're an electric vehicle charging desert and Visit McMinnville's tracking a grant program for new chargers, which should be available for private sector, municipalities, and pretty much anybody that wants to host a charger. And the percent of reimbursement on those is still to be decided, as well as kind of how that's going to roll out. But why Visit McMinnville's tracking that is a 220-volt charger typically is going to have somebody doing a partial charge and they're going to be in the area for an hour to two hours. And so that's going to increase spending. It'll be day traffic. It's not going to put additional burden on our near-capacity lodging options we currently have. And we also appointed two new board members, which came with very impressive resumes. And overall, the future's looking very bright for Visit McMinnville and happy to be on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission was not able to meet this month. Go to our department heads on Zoom to begin. City Manager Jeff Towery?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, first thing I'd like to do tonight is to introduce you to Vicky Hedges, our new human resources manager. Make some noise or move around, Vicky, so folks know where you are. Vicky comes to us most recently from 14 years in Clocomus Community College. We're thrilled to have her on board. This is week two for Vicky, so welcome, welcome her to the team, please.
Thank you.
Like to make a special note that while the last week at the ICMA conference was a thrill for me to be introduced and inducted as the president of the International City County Managers Association, I was particularly honored to be joined there by, by Mayor Drabkin. In addition to doing a lovely job introducing me, she served on a panel with me, two other managers and elected officials to talk about council manager relationships. She attended a couple of receptions and she made a great impression, not just as the mayor, but as a representative of this body and this community. And I really was honored that Remy was able to join me for that experience. Also want to acknowledge the core services team that made a panel presentation. The library director Jenny Berg, finance director Jennifer Quayar, and former city attorney Amanda Gail Hinman participated in a course services presentation during one of the sessions. It was very well attended. I had numerous people come up afterwards and talk to me about it. Impressed by both the detail and the information and the commitment and the work that our entire executive team did and, and the entire executive team can understand that they were well represented by Jenny, Jennifer, and Amanda. Finally, my ICMA presidential travel starts in earnest in October. I'll be attending state association conferences in Vermont and Tennessee the second and fourth weeks of October. I will attend both council meetings that month. The second meeting of the month will most likely be virtual and I have nothing else to report tonight. Thank you for your time, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Chief Scales?
Real quickly, I wanted to update, as I always do, about our hiring. We were able to offer two unconditional job officer, job officers, offers to two candidates. They'll be starting October 17th. We continue, we do still have five vacancies, so our staff is extremely limited. Our call times and our response times are obviously lagging for our community, but I wanted to share that with you. There was a positive note that we did, we were able to offer a couple job officers past week that were accepted. So Linda Gardner, our support services manager position that remains open. I was thankful to meet with Vicky, our new HR manager. She was tremendous yesterday with our team in trying to solve and help us maybe refresh our hiring practices and processes. So thank you very much. And I wanted to thank Counselor Payne for taking the time last week to meet with me for an hour or two to get a little bit better grasp of what's going on at the police department. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. I'll go to our Public Works Director, Anne Pagano.
I did a report. Thank you, Mayor.
We can barely hear you.
Sorry, I don't have anything new to report. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. To our city attorney, Walt Gao.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, I just wanted to comment that a lot of time this past month has been spent interacting with Chief of the Fire District and Truman Stone relating to the proposed new district petition and resolution that, that is working its way towards you. Also, we've had interactions over the last month regarding the general services fee ordinance and upcoming resolution. I think that Jennifer will be bringing that back to you fairly, fairly soon. Finally, we had an interesting and I think productive initial meeting on, at a staff level discussing local Measure 109, time, place, and manner options that should be coming back to the council for an initial discussion and roundtable conversation in, in October.
Thank you very much. Finance Director Jennifer Quayar?
Yeah, I just want to share a couple things with folks. First off, Council President Garvin mentioned the budget committee applications that have a deadline on Friday, the 30th of September. And last year, you all authorized us to extend the deadline. And I do have a handful of applicants, but because we have three open, I would encourage you to consider extending the deadline this cycle as well. Yes?
Who, whose places are we? I know Wendy Phoenix and let's see, Allison.
Yes, Wendy and Allison's terms came up and Cherry had resigned.
Yeah, I know, but Victoria Ernst took Cherry's place, was my understanding. She, I'd ask her back on the committee. She believes she's on it.
Yes, Victoria's on it.
So who else would we be replacing?
I think there are seven members, correct? Or are there just six?
I just couldn't figure out who else would be leaving that hasn't been mentioned.
I thought Victoria took the gentleman that was also up at the same time, not, not Cherry's.
Oh, gosh, you know.
No, it was Cherry's.
Well, Cherry was the initial one and we said no to that and we ended up keeping.
No, I know, but when Cherry resigned, Victoria was asked by Scott to take her place.
You're right. I, my bad, there are just two open.
Well, I just, you know, wanted to understand that.
Yeah, you might depend on your finance director to be able to do some basic math. Apologies, folks.
We also had that vacancy from Peter stepping down and so.
Yeah, but I think he's been, was replaced already, wasn't he?
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is too. Apologies.
No worries. I think that in, well, Council President, what did you want to say? I'm sorry, I need to cut you off. I think that, I don't believe it takes council action to further the deadline. I think Council President and I could check back with you towards the end of this week. Oftentimes, there are a lot of last-minute applications and bringing extra attention to it in this meeting might also bring in some, some more applications. So I'm glad to hear that we have more applicants than we do have positions and it is always so wonderful to have a robust pool of interviewees. And if that works for the council, I think we could go forward in that way of, of not extending the, the application deadline at this time, but Council President and I would check back with you on the, on the, at, towards the end of the week. Does that work? For you? You look concerned, sir?
No. My recollection is different, but it doesn't really matter. Whatever seats really are open, as long as we get them filled, it doesn't really matter what my recollection is.
Okay, so I think we will not hold the applica, we will not hold the deadline open at this time, but we will touch base towards the end of the week.
Okay, great. Thanks. Then I also wanted to let folks know that the auditors are in-house doing their final testing, so we're, you know, responding to their data requests and such the next couple of weeks. So that's going well so far, not quid. And then I wanted to let folks know, we have the preliminary PERS rates. The, the PERS board doesn't meet until Friday and so on Friday is when they'll be going over this and, you know, ratifying them or not. But we are seeing increases in every category. However, the increases are substantially lower than our advisory rates that we got this time last year. So mixed news in terms of it's, every, every category has gone up. It's ranging between 3% and 7.2%, but the advisory rates ranged from 12.4% to 4.9%. So substantially lower. So that's primarily driven by, you know, a robust stock market and really strong earnings portfolio of Oregon PERS generally.
How does the work-back program affect those rates? Or does it affect those rates at all?
I don't believe, yeah, I don't believe that's impacts, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So just the items I wanted to share with folks.
Thank you so much. Parks and Recreation Director Susan Muir?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, fall is upon us, but I thought we'd take a quick, formal look back at Summer Fun. If you haven't heard the numbers, you know Summer Fun is a partnership between Parks and Rec and the library. And this summer, we did 145 activities, which were held at 21 sites and our main goal was to take the program out to the community, so we did that. And this year, I think we doubled, if I remember, our participation rate last year, but this summer, we had over 6,200 members of our community experience the city's Parks and Rec and Library programs. So we think that's a great success and kudos to Katie Noid and Parks and Rec and Sam Gary at the library who led that effort this summer. We also gave out over 1,700 snack bags to kids from funding provided by the Oregon Community Summer Grant. And I just want to say thank you to several of the counselors that came out to participate with us, whether you were giving popsicles out at the park or judging and waving the checkered flag for the zucchini races. We really appreciate having you there for the Summer Fun. So since fall is upon us, the youth soccer started, Joe Dancer, so we've got our core group going there. And then I wanted to let everybody know. And then I wanted to let everybody know, this weekend, our adaptive soccer program is starting, which is brand-new for us, and it did bring together a lot of volunteers to help us get this off the ground. And one of the things that we were able to purchase with some of the grant money that we received for Summer Fun was adaptive rec equipment. And so I thought I would show you, this is one of our adaptive soccer balls. I don't know if you can hear it, but this is for any kiddos that need additional clues in addition to visual ones, if they have any sensory issues. So we've got a number of pieces of equipment like this that we bought with a grant, and we're happy to invite all the kids. I think we have maybe eight to 10 kids signed up for this Saturday, so we are really looking forward to starting that program and getting more adaptive programs out to the community. And then I just want to thank the council. We are taking delivery of our ARPA purchase van this week. We'll spend the winter outfitting it appropriately so that we can even deliver better services next summer for Summer Fun. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Fantastic, thank you. And welcome, Vicki Hedges, our new HR Director. Would you like to report to the council this evening?
I don't have much to report. Like Jeff said, this is my second week, but I am happy to be here and excited to meet with several people already in my first week here at the city. Everybody's been super welcoming.
Wonderful. Thank you, welcome. Planning Director, Heather Richards.
So in the planning department, we have a couple openings on committees as well. We have a planning commission vacancy. That deadline is also this Friday, and that is for a resident-at-large, so our most flexible spot on the commission. And then we also have an affordable housing committee position open as well. And both of those have been advertised. We've been receiving applications and look forward to receiving more. We also sent out a mailer and advertisements about three project advisory committees that we are setting up to help support some of our long-range planning efforts over the next year. We have set them up for the Fox Ridge Road area plan, for our transportation system plan update, and then also for the update of our housing needs analysis and economic opportunity analysis that we need to submit to the state by December of 2023. If anyone's interested in applying for those and has not received the information, they can contact me or anyone in the planning department, and we'll provide them with that information. Those applications, the Fox Ridge Road application is due by October 7th, the other ones are due by the end of October. And we're getting a lot of response on those, actually, so it's great to see the interest.
Fantastic, thank you. Fire Chief, Rich Leifert.
Mayor and Council, I wanted to give you an update on our public outreach on the fire districting work so far. We've hosted the community meeting here with the residents. It's just a component of the proposal. Proposal? Chokes me up a little bit, sorry. We utilized an online survey to collect feedback on the proposal and promoted through digital channels, conducted outreach to 25 local service organizations in an attempt to coordinate presentations or follow-up meetings with those groups. Two of those outreach meetings have been held. If you belong to service organizations or groups that are interested in hearing the information on the potential district, we'd be happy to coordinate for you. And the webpage on the city's website is updated and accessing information, and we have had several dozen emails and questions, conversations going back and forth that are positive through the majority of the dialogue. And then on the survey itself, the feedback that we received from the survey was limited in number, but reflected very similarly the proportions and percentages of the polling that was conducted by the polling company. Overall, they're relatively happy with their current service, but when they're given the information about the new district, even the rates, it's a 70% positive return, with about 15% of the overall district. And the majority of the.
Thank you, Chief. And I would just like to acknowledge everybody in the room here that did this first public information seminar that was held here a couple weeks ago. I thought it was very well done. I know people have reached out for the recorded video afterwards in order to be able to follow up, so it was a good public information session that's continuing to provide good public information. I know Council President Garvin wants to continue to do additional public information sessions, and I was also very impressed by the number of leaders from other fire districts that went out of their way to visit and talk about how successful fire districts had been in their area. So extend a general thank you out to them as well, but thank you for your presentation and your work on that. And I do support and hope that we can have a continued, very informative, public information sessions and lots of community involvement, so everybody feels very informed going into the election. City Recorder, Claudia Sisneros.
Nothing for the council.
Thank you. We will now consider Resolution Number 2022-60, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a professional services agreement with Claire Company, Inc., to provide both building inspection and plan review services as needed. I'd like to call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present this item.
Yes, so in McMinnville, we offer a full-service building program in partnership with the county. The county provides the electrical portion of the program. Because we're a small city and because of our program is just not generating the revenue of some larger cities, we can't afford to hire FTEs that are special inspectors. Special inspectors are sort of commercial plumbing inspectors and other inspectors like that who are looking at more complex projects, and we don't have a lot of them in town, so probably wouldn't warrant an FTE anyways. However, we have to provide the services. So we have used in the past Claire Building Services, they're a third-party vendor to provide these inspection services. During COVID, we did not use them because the city issued a, state issued an emergency clause that allowed us to use our local inspectors to do that work, but that has now been lifted. We need to go back to the special building inspection services. We're coming to you because this is, as an aggregate, over the last four years, this contract is now getting us to about $149,000, and so it does need city council authority with that. We are going to go out for an RFP for a third-party vendor for these services, but we've been working on that and contacting other vendors in the last couple of months without a lot of success, and we need to put this in place so that we can continue to offer the program.
Thank you. Do any councilors have questions of staff at this time? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-60.
So moved.
Second, then. I have a motion from Counselor Gary and a second from Counselor Manke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2022-61, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with Yamhill Community Action Partnership and the Sadeev Newburg, recognizing the relationship between the three agencies relative to the operations of a navigation center, both in Newburg and McMinnville, both of which will be entitled Any Door Place. And I call on Planning Director Richards to present.
Yes, so, and I think what I'll do is present for this in the next Resolution 2022-62, because it's the same project and the same context for the discussion. So in 2021, the city of McMinnville received $1.5 million to build a navigation center in McMinnville. Navigation Center is a low-barrier emergency shelter with onsite supportive services, and the premise behind that is providing the onsite supportive services provides people-ready access and also the support they need to get more stabilized. And Project Turnkey has been a great example of how that's worked and gotten people into a place of being able to attain permanent housing. So with, and there were only, I think, six communities that received these grants for these navigation centers. Representative Noble went to bat for the city of McMinnville and was able to get it for us. The navigation centers need to be operated by an authorized nonprofit who has experience in this, and we, as you recall, we went through a process where we established an agreement with YCAP to operate the navigation center here in McMinnville on YCAP property. We need to actually do some construction on that property to expand it. We're going to, there's two structures there, we're going to connect them so that we can provide 30 homeless, 30 beds, as well as rooms and offices for the supportive services there. And we have contracted with an architect for that, and we're underway with that process. In construction and development these days, things are running a little slower than probably we all would wish because of supply issues with vendors, as well as different contractors and subcontractors. So it's taking a little longer for that project to get built. At the same time, we received word from the state that there was an opportunity for another $1.7 million of funding for the navigation center in the city of McMinnville to help with construction and operations. So we did apply for that and received notice just recently that we, that it had been, that our application had been accepted. One of the caveats of that grant is that the services need to be up and operational by June 30 of 2023. So with the delays that we've had in our construction here, we didn't, we got back to the state and said, you know, based on what's going on, we're not going to be operational by June of 20, by the end of June of 2023. But we are in discussion with the city of Newburg about doing a partnership there. So as McMinnville was working on this navigation center concept in McMinnville, Newburg started working on a navigation center concept in Newburg as well, where they could offer an emergency low-barrier shelter with the same supportive services. And YCAP is also working with them to get into an agreement to operate that. That will be up and operational by June 30 of 2023. So we had a meeting with the state to say McMinnville won't be operational, but the funds will, you know, really help McMinnville move its project forward. Newburg is also working on a navigation center. They need some funds to finish rehabilitation so they can have 30 beds there and the onsite supportive services. What we would like to do is use some of the funds for the city of Newburg, get them up and operational by June 30, 2023. That's then providing the services for Yamhill County. Part of the grant is to buy two vans, which will then provide transport for people to get to the services in the city of Newburg. And then at the same time, we'll provide services here in McMinnville onsite at the First Baptist Church. Services at McMinnville, the First Baptist Church, will be those supportive services of case management and things like that. YCAP will be the staff providing that there. That's not what's happening right now, it's a lot of volunteers, but YCAP will be using that facility and their training that they're using for their city of Newburg staff to also train staff that will be, that will be performing at the McMinnville Navigation Center, so that training can happen once for all employees. There's nine employees that will be hired through this process. And then, once the McMinnville Center is open, they can go right into that center and start operating there. The state is supportive of that, with the caveat that they want to know that that agreement is in play between the city of Newburg, the city of McMinnville, and YCAP. The city of Newburg is very supportive of it, and you may not know, the city of Newburg voted to allocate $200,000 of their ARPA funds to the city of McMinnville's navigation center for operations, and they're still, before we even started talking about deploying some of the grant funds from the state that we just recently applied for to help Newburg finish their project, they were already committed to those funds for McMinnville, even though they're now building their own. So they're committed to the partnership of having two centers in each city. So the first, the MOU, it sort of describes that relationship in terms of everyone's commitment to each other, in terms of the triangle, but there's no specifics in that MOU yet, because all the grant agreements will come through a separate process. The second piece that you have in front of you, the second resolution, is to be able to say that we're providing some services here in McMinnville. We don't have the site yet by June 30, 2023. We need to provide it at the First Baptist Church, and so that's what that agreement's saying. That's the original agreement that we had with YCAP, when we put an agreement together to say, we're going to build this navigation center, and then we want you to operate it, and we'll hand it to you. We are mending that agreement to add two lines to it to say, in the meantime, before the center is built, YCAP will be providing these supportive services at the First Baptist Church. The provision in there, by Oregon legislative law that was passed in 2021, I believe, House Bill 2006 in 2021, passed a bill saying that emergency shelters can be sited in cities without land-use regulations, so cities cannot impart land-use regulations on where these are sited if they're sited by June 30 of 2022. So, but just recently, in the 2022 legislature, they passed another bill, House Bill 4051, that extended that to June 30 of 2023. And so this provision for providing these services at the First Baptist Church would not go, cannot legally go through any sort of land-use process in terms of citing it there. We, the city, have to agree to allow it to be there, but it has to operate within several different other provisions. So just land use is waived, and it will still need to operate within the provisions of the building code, so we'll be looking at it to see what they can offer there and how the building is built to accommodate those services. And then also, that has to be a qualified nonprofit who has experience in providing these services, providing them, and ministering and managing the program. So there's a variety of different sort of quality control checks written into that bill that says, city, you cannot regulate where it goes, but it has to have these other provisions in place, too. So that's, those two resolutions in front of you are sort of creating that pathway for that second state grant of $1.7 million to come into Yamhill County to support the two navigation centers, and YCAP operating both of them, and the relationship between the two cities and YCAP in that regards. And then the ability to say to the state, we do have a site in McMinnville while we're building our other site where these supportive services can be provided. I think YCAP's main priority will be focused on the city of Newburg's navigation center, why we are building ours, because they'll have all the provisions there and the supportive structure in terms of what they need with the offices and everything else, and the beds. And so that's why, written into the grant, is the funds to purchase these two vans as well.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask a question that I think I know the answer to, but just to make sure I have my information correct. So part of, part of this will include replacing the volunteer staffs from two existing programs, and those two existing programs, what Community Wellness Collective is doing in Newburg, and what First Baptist Church is doing in McMinnville. Basically, YCAP will be bringing them under the umbrella and taking away all the volunteers with which they're trying, trying to run these programs, and they'll be replacing that volunteer with trained staff to oversee these facilities.
Yes.
Yes, okay, great.
And then the services currently being provided, so these are currently be provided at First Baptist Church, so services currently being provided there will then relocate to the navigation center in McMinnville, once that's constructed.
And so once it's constructed, then, yes, and they'll continue to support these other entities that are doing the work, but that, for McMinnville alone, it'll move, but Newburg will stay where it is.
Yeah. And continuing to support the entities doing the work, it's going to take a lot of burden off the volunteer entities doing the work, because now YCAP will have the funding to staff, the appropriate staff, to provide those services.
Yeah, I can see it taking a lot of pressure off overall, because having trained staff in these types of situations is so crucial.
Yeah, and I'd like to believe, I remembered that all the grant numbers by memory, and I don't, but I think only about $200,000 to $300,000 of the 1.7 will go to Newburg for their rehab that they need. And then in terms of the construction versus operations, because all the money needs to be spent by June 30, 2023, it's half operations and half construction, because the half operations is hiring that staff, they're going to start that in January, training that staff, and then getting them boots on the ground in Newburg and both, and McMinnville before June 30 of 2023.
Thank you. Do any councilors have questions of staff at this time?
I do.
Councilor Chenoweth?
When you say that we are going to be building this navigation center here in McMinnville, who's "we"?
So "we" is a partnership between YCAP and the city. The city, the city council adopted a resolution that approved this agreement between YCAP and the city. The city was the recipient of the funds to build the facility, and YCAP's the operator. This, YCAP actually, and YCAP also doesn't develop properties. So we felt comfortable managing the construction side of the project on YCAP property. That's where we finally decided was the best location for it. But we also thought YCAP needed to be a partner at the table in terms of that construction project, because we want it designed in such a way that it's. project because we want it designed in such a way that it supports what they need. So right now, we have a project management team that's comprised of city personnel and YCAP personnel, working with the architectural firm.
And who owns that when it's done being completed?
YCAP will own it when it's done.
Okay. And are we being reimbursed in any way for the money and time that we're putting into that in that project?
Yes. So we are, we hired in the community development department a special projects manager, Jody Christensen, and she is, she's our project manager for this navigation center. And her time is being expended into the grant for the navigation center.
Okay. In this, you're saying we're doing this in order to meet OHCS requirements so that we can get the funding from OHCS? Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah, so that's grant number two. The first grant was the general fund grant of 1.5 million, and this other grant of 1.689 million is OHCS fund.
So OHCS is aware that we're doing this this way in order to make this happen, but this is also being done in order to secure this and keep the state legislature funding as well, is that correct?
No, so the state, the 1.5 million from the general fund was general fund funds that came to the city. The provision behind that was we needed to build the navigation center. And so that's, those are secure funds as long as we're moving forward with that project. So I wouldn't say that the state, the OHCS funds, keeping that state general fund is dependent on getting this OHCS grant. But where the value is, is the 1.5 million we got from the state general fund didn't have caveats associated with it in terms of it could only be used for construction. It said it could be used for construction, land acquisition, and operations. And so there's always been a concern about long-term, sustainable operational capacity in terms of resources. And so what the state, what the OHCS grant does is it takes some pressure off of that 1.5 million in terms of putting it all into construction and reserving some of it for future operations.
Fair enough. But my question more deals with, is this agreement memorandum of understanding intended to ensure that the 1.5 million from the legislature doesn't end up off the table because of the time window regarding?
No. So the MOU is for the OHCS grant.
And it has no bearing whatsoever on the state funds?
On the state general, the representative noble 1.5 million, no.
Okay, thank you. Last question, I think, or maybe this is more of a comment than a question. I have real concerns about us using, no, let me ask a question first. You made a comment in the midst of this that the services are currently already being provided at First Baptist Church. Can you elaborate what you mean by that before I make my next statement?
So First Baptist Church provides some services to our homeless community through their volunteer programs there, and YCAP's been providing some support to them, but not a significant amount of support. I can't speak to exactly what they are, to be honest with you, but I do know that moving forward, when YCAP is able to staff up, they're going to be the ones operating a program at First Baptist Church, the services that are provided there.
So at this point, though, we don't know, are you saying we're not really having those services provided there, and it's going to be?
I think I might be able to speak to this counselor.
Okay, thank you.
I can attempt anyways. So currently, through their volunteer force and their ministry, First Baptist Church provides a variety of services to those who are unhoused. They include, although are not limited, to sometimes overnight shelter, warming, cooling shelters. There are showers on Fridays that can be signed up for, which is actually one of the only places in McMinnville that a person can take a shower if they don't have one in their home. And some other general services. So that is happening currently and has been happening for the last couple of years. I think one of the important parts here, and one of the reasons I wanted to clarify at the beginning, if my understanding was correct, is because we are aware that there are neighborhood impacts, especially when you're running a shelter and when you are running a shelter with a volunteer force. And so this is not putting a new service into this location. This is, these monies will allow the support and trained staff to run an existing program. And then that program will actually move over to the other YCAP properties from First Baptist Church, once that construction is complete. Did I answer your question?
Sort of. And I'll just express my concern because, I mean, you've kind of hit the heart of where I'm concerned. We had, we had problems that exploded in our community eight to 10 years ago. And those problems exploded in our community specifically because of the services that were being provided downtown by three churches. And I, no disrespect to those churches, I appreciate their concern and their compassion and the love that they have for the houseless community. I commend them for the efforts and the work that they have done. The problem was, is that it ended up being a magnet. And I have great concerns, and that magnet, the costs associated with doing that was not just to the neighbors, it's also to our services that we're trying to provide, to our fire personnel, our medical personnel, our police personnel. Everybody gets strained as those numbers start to increase. And I'm concerned that we're walking right back into the same trap that we walked away from eight to 10 years ago. And that's why I asked, you know, I wanted to talk about this, I want to put this on the record because I'm very concerned the direction this is heading. If we create magnets, I mean, I can remember in 2018, pardon me while I tell a little story, but in 2018, when I was knocking doors, running for this position and lost to Sal Peralta, I knocked a door in which I spoke to a gentleman who had been homeless 10 years prior to that. And he talked to me, he said, you got to understand some things. And I said, okay, tell me, because I have, I did some couch surfing, but it wasn't really homelessness, like some of these, most of these folks are experiencing. So I can't totally relate. And he said, well, you know, I chose to be homeless. And I chose to be homeless because I wanted to be a part of the drug culture and having the responsibilities of a job, a house, electric bill, all that, was not conducive to the lifestyle I wanted to live. And he said, I finally decided I didn't want to live that life anymore. And it took me a year to get out of there, which is unfortunate. We shouldn't, it shouldn't take that long. When somebody wants out, we should be able to help get them out quicker. He said, but one of the things I want you to know is there's a network of communication among the homeless. And the more services you provide, you become in competition with other localities because you're providing the best services, and they're going to start coming to you. You become a magnet. And so I just want to express the caution that if we're not careful, we're going to, we're going to cross that line and become a magnet if we're not already there. I don't, you know, I've heard some anecdotal evidence that would tell me we might already be there, but I don't have any concrete, so I'm not, I can't point to that. But he said, you need to be very cognizant of that. This was a success story. The guy had been 10 years, he learned a trade, and he was about to open his own business. He's super excited, it was a cool conversation. But he gave that warning. And so I want to share that warning and give that warning that I'm a little concerned the direction this is heading. I am supportive, but with reservation.
Understood.
And I guess I would say that the, so the value of YCAP being able to invest in this new staff is providing the case management services, which are those other services that that person accessing, that took a year to access. It's trying to bring that to the houseless population in a more accessible way. So it's a different type of service than I think people are thinking is what we're talking about.
And I get that. And I'm really grateful that we have, how do I want to say this? I think one of the solutions to this, the problem is far more complex than anybody can solve. One of the solutions is a much better way of dealing with drug dependency. One of the solutions is a much better way to deal with mental illness. And another solution is to have services at the point of contact. And at least this has services at the point of contact. And I am grateful for at least that component.
And then I also want to clarify, so the First Baptist Church is not a 365 shelter. It's only for overnight stays. It's only a shelter for overnight stays during emergency weather conditions because it doesn't meet the building codes for overnight shelter. So there's an exception in the state building codes, it's, you know, that allows churches to open up for emergency overnight stays when certain conditions exist in the weather and stuff like that. So it's safer inside than outside. And so that, First Baptist Church has been approved under those provisions, but it's not a 365 overnight.
Thank you, Mayor, for indulging me.
Absolutely. Are there any other comments that anybody would like to make at this time? Questions? Counselor Gary?
Perhaps the other, First Baptist offers a lot of other services, not just to the houseless community. How and will those be affected?
Counselor Gary, I don't know the answer to that question, and I apologize. That would have been a better question for YCAP and First Baptist to be here to answer. So I apologize for that.
Any additional questions, counselor?
No, just the one.
Okay. I mean, I suppose it would be a good time to add a couple other success stories to the table. This program greatly mimics the program that we started at the beginning of COVID, which was really a response to shelter in place orders, and we knew we did not have and still do not have adequate shelter beds for those experiencing homelessness. The program that this is continuing on has boasted a 75% success rate since its inception, which is phenomenal in the world of housing. Success means that those that enter the program exit into permanent or transitional housing. And most impressively, it's continued to reach those who are chronically homeless. And somebody that's chronically homeless means that their housing situation has been unstable for a year or more. So we knew early on about many people that had been houseless in McMinnville for many years, who had a variety of services available that this, this program, specifically because of the case support that Director Richards mentioned, was able to move forward. And it typically takes a minimum of seven points of contact with somebody that's experiencing houselessness to get them into services. So this has a lot of opportunity linked into it. And then there are a variety of reasons that people experience houselessness, and drugs are absolutely one of them, mental illness is absolutely one of them. And for our area, according to our last point in time count, the leading cause of houselessness in McMinnville were those fleeing domestic violence. So 14% of folks who were reporting being houseless here were mostly women and children who were fleeing domestic violence. So I do like to always remind people that drug addiction is not the only reason, and mental illness is not the only reason, that people experience houselessness. We also have very high rates of senior women who experience houselessness because when they have a spouse that dies, their medical bills tend to be overly burdensome, or they can no longer afford their housing. And almost half of our houseless population is under the age of 18. Thank you for indulging me. Any additional comments at this time? Yes, Counselor Payne?
Thank you, Mayor. Zach, if I might respond to your question a little bit. So First Baptist has been providing some level of service to, again, not 365, of course, but they've been doing their, you know, like Mayor said, with their warming and cooling shelters. And they do Saturday morning breakfast and the Friday showers. And they've continued to do the free medical clinic, the free dental clinic, while having a family place in there and continuing to offer NA and AA meetings all at the same time. So I would assume there wouldn't be any disruption. I would assume that actually would be beneficial in the fact that now there's going to be people paid doing this service versus hopeful, but probably fatigued volunteers from First Baptist Church.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Payne. Thank you, everybody. There's good conversation around this. I do want to move this forward. So at this time, I'll consider a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022.
Oh, moved.
Second? I have a motion from Counselor Mankey and a second from Counselor Payne. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously, and we will now consider Resolution Number 2022-62, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an amendment to the navigation center construction and operation agreement approved by Resolution Number 2022-35. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Oh, moved.
Second? I have a motion from Counselor Payne and a second from Counselor Mankey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. The motion passes unanimously. And we will now consider a request from Moffett Vineyards. And I would ask Chief to present, Chief Scales, excuse me, for clarity, to present.
Yes, Mayor and members of council, this is a liquor license recommendations before you. It does not have a resolution number. It is simply an approval of Moffett Vineyards, doing business as Moffett Vineyards, to receive their liquor license at 1400 Northeast Alpha Drive. It's a winery first location. They're going to be open basically all week, eight to five. So there is a recommendation from Captain Simons, who did the background check and the records check, that this liquor license be approved. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do any councilors have questions of staff at this time? I hear a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. I have a motion from Counselor Mankey and a second from Counselor Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. The request passes unanimously. And I'm, what time do you get to work this morning, Counselor? We now have Resolution Number 2022-63 before us. This is a resolution authorizing submission of and supporting a petition for the formation of a new fire district pursuant to ORS 198800 to ORS 198, and a ballot measure for the formation of the McMinnville Fire District. And I'd like to call on our fire chief, Rich Leifert, to present at this time.
Mayor and council, staff is asking to table the consideration of Resolution 2022-63 this evening. There are ongoing discussions with the McMinnville Rural Fire District Board as to what rural assets are transferable. Once the decision is made, we'll bring it back to, bring the resolution back to council.
Thank you, Chief. Do any councilors have questions of staff at this time?
Before, before I, before this item is officially tabled, I would like council to make a decision on the fire station language that we had discussed during the work session. It's on page 37 of the packet in the resolution at the bottom, so that we can bring back the resolution with language that the council has agreed upon, so we don't have to amend that resolution once we get to that.
That was page 37, you said, Chief?
I totally had it up and ready to go.
The very bottom paragraph on page 37. Truman Stone, our contract counsel from LGLI is on the line also, if there are any questions.
Thank you.
Chief, reading through that paragraph again, what does, how does this affect the sustainability of the new district formation, given the performance and calculations and forecasting that ESCI did throughout the process from 2018 to now? Obviously, my recollection is that it was always intended that all assets and all debt from the city of McMinnville go to the district. And so bringing this out as an equity asset from that district does affect the sustainability in some fashion, but to what degree and does that move?
So the ESCI study throughout the term, you're accurate, when we were in all models, all assets and all debts of all partners were transferred into the new district to build the financial modules off of. I do not believe that they did long-term financial studies to deter- I do not believe that they did long-term financial studies to determine the implications of facilities, or they did do a fleet management study, and they did work like that, but I don't believe they did a long-term implication to determine the hard asset facilities. If they didn't come in, what would that do to the long-term planning? That work was not done.
Okay. And then my other question to councilors is, serving on the Airport Commission and seeing how the condition of our current city-owned hangars that got absorbed after their leases expired, because there was really no incentive to maintain those past your intended usable time, what would we really be getting back as an asset, other than land, if we don't send this to the new district like intended through our discussions with all of our partners with the ESCI? Because the city airport hangars basically get the bare minimum of maintenance, and then the city absorbs them. Now, currently, we do renewable leases pending they pass building inspections, but that would be my concern of, we as a city absorb the station back in 20 or 30 years after a couple terms, and we're left with, you know, a demolition project that we have to undertake that was built in 1986, and we really have nothing of value.
So what are you saying, Adam, that we should divviate up as it was originally written at the end of 10 years or whatever?
It was originally written, originally presented to all the partners that all your assets and all your debts go to the new district, which would mean the fire station and the property go to the new district. At our last discussion, we talked about a 10-year renewable, well, initially, we talked about selling it at 10 years, and then this language, the way I'm reading it, says it'll be a dollar per year at 10-year terms, up to 10 terms total. I personally feel that the rural district is reassessing their asset allocation, because we are reassessing our asset allocation from what we initially spoke with them about through this whole process.
So you're saying it shouldn't be a lease, it should be granting them the property?
Yes. And the other side of that coin is, you know, we're stewards of our citizens' dollars, and there is currently value there, but does them backing out some of their assets, so we can back out some of our assets, or vice versa, what does that do for the sustainability of a new fire district, as well as what does it do for the service levels of that new fire district? And that's really where the question is for me, for our citizens, is us as city council keeping this asset today, does that really not move the needle on service levels of this new district? And does it affect the sustainability of the new district without going out for an operating levy inside of the window that we've been expressing to constituents as we've been rolling this out?
What would your answer be?
My answer would be, yes, I would love the city to retain that asset, but I don't think that doing it at the 11th hour is in the best faith of the new district, and we're here to move this forward to a may vote. And I would, I would just say, send it, because that's the way we've talked about it the whole time we've gone through this process.
Send the asset, the fire department and the land it sits on to the district.
Yes.
I guess what I would think, I don't disagree with you, probably the building is necessary at least, but I do not like the concept of giving the fire and the land. I think they would have the right to use the department as long as they physically could, and they can do whatever they want to, or we'll demolish it if it comes to that. But I think the land should stay with the city.
Mayor, can I comment on this?
Yes, please.
This change in language probably came from me in my review. I did not get to review the initial language before it was, before the council the first time. The prior language provided for a 10-year lease, after which time the city and the district would jointly determine whether or not it was still needed. So it required two parties to agree to that, not one party. And if it was determined it was not needed, then it would be sold, and the asset would essentially be divided between the fire district and the city. It did not provide an option for the city to be able to convert that land into a different use if it was no longer usable as a fire department, but it had another valid public use for the city.
Yeah, and I didn't disagree with that one at all.
But the first thing I wanted to emphasize, the first thing I want to emphasize is that this language provides 100 years of operational control solely by the district. At the district's option, the district can renew the lease if it finds the building to still have value for that purpose for a century. Now, that's essentially the same language that you used for the fires, for the fire tower, which is why I made them analogous, because it was simpler, and it eliminated the possibility of a dispute in 10 years over whether or not the building was still usable or feasible. And it made the judgment go to the district and not be a joint judgment as between the city and the district, which I could see causing a significant problem at that time if you had disagreements.
Could I just?
Please, go ahead.
Is the presumption that the maintenance and everything will be cared for by the fire department if they're?
Any lease should provide for adequate maintenance on a long-term basis by the party.
Okay, well, then I don't really have a great problem with this, then.
And I'd like, I have a clarity question. I understood that the change in language was not a clawback on anything that had been promised, but it was removing the demand to sell and creating options for the district to have more choices in how it was used, as opposed to it had to be a sale after 10 years.
I can't speak to negotiations, because I haven't been involved in them, but what I can tell you is that the change eliminated the requirement for a dual approval of continuation after 10 years, and made that determination a single determination on the part of the fire district. So the fire district could continuously extend the lease for a dollar a year. Now, the lease would, should contain adequate maintenance provisions, so you don't get back a fully depreciated building, other than normal wear and tear over time. So there may be a time when that building is no longer feasible, or it's outmoded for fire and emergency vehicle, but it might work fine for a police annex or a public works annex or some other public building. It's a very strategically located piece of property.
Yes.
And the likelihood of cities ever wanting to part with it strikes me as, you know, a low possibility. So that was the motivation for me, was to, one, eliminate the ambiguity, two, extend the timeframe, three, ultimately, once it's no longer needed for a fire station, recapture the benefit to the, essentially, the city bondholders who paid for it.
Okay, thank you. I know councilors might have additional comments and questions for any number of our staff, so I'm just going to start at one end and work my way down. Counselor Chenoweth?
Yeah, I have a few questions. So when we started this whole process, or when we've done negotiations, we've included all these assets as going with this new district. Is that correct?
The studies that were designed around, the budgets built around the studies included those assets and debts.
So is it reasonable to assume that the fire, the rural fire district assumed this was going to be an asset in the deal?
I would assume that, yeah, I would be assuming, and I don't want to do that, but I, the study, the study that we used, used that model, yes.
And so here we're at the 11th hour, and we're making this statement. We have the potential of coming off like we are just making a change in our agreement at the last second to hold what is arguably, probably, the best asset that we have. Would that be an accurate statement?
I mean, there's a lot to evaluating best.
You're asking me to speak for the rural board, and I can't.
No, I'm not. I'm saying, are we essentially making a decision to hold the best asset that we have in this agreement?
Well, so, it's the largest asset, but it also has the largest deficit that.
And who would be responsible for all the deferred maintenance that's gone on in that building going into the new?
That would be in the agreement that's arranged between the city and the new district as part of the lease or property transfer agreement.
Okay. Okay. You know, one of the things I'm really concerned about is that we have to make sure that this deal goes through. We want to be focused on doing what's best for our taxpayers, and I get that. And we need to focus, and of course, rural needs to do the same thing, but I don't want to be in a situation where with a potential partner, they're feeling like we're breaking trust, and they're feeling uncomfortable, and they're, and...
Direct your comments to me, Counselor, please.
I don't want to be feeling in that, I don't want to be there, right? We need this to go through, and if this is, well, we need maybe strong, but I think we, as a general rule, the council has said we are interested in making sure this fire district happens. And if we set up a scenario where all of a sudden, at the 11th hour, we're taking away the best asset, I am concerned that the result is going to be the fire district vote isn't going to go the way we want in the rural district.
Thank you. Counselor Gary?
If, if, if in the studies and data and tables and information we based the formation of the district on, the overwhelming sentiment was that all assets and debts get transferred to the new district. I think this represents, doesn't represent that. I think this represents you'll get a really cool sweetheart deal, but it's not a transference of asset. And reflecting on Counselor Garvin's question, I'd perhaps be more inclined to alter the language to transfer the asset, but see if there's perhaps a right-of-first refusal deal if it ever became, you know, if the district deemed it, you know, we're going to move out and build our own substations, we don't need this anymore, we would begin the negotiation on if that could come back to us or not. But otherwise, seems that in the best interest of the creation, successful creation and sustainable operation of the district, if the asset goes to them, that would be what I would be in favor of, transferring the asset.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta?
We'll come back to Counselor Peralta. I apologize. I was speaking into the mic, but I had my headset turned off. Can people hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I just was saying I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Manke?
You know, honestly, I originally thought it likely that the fire station would go to the fire district. And then when I saw the draft that was proposed at the last meeting, it seemed reasonably fair to me. It's kind of a quid pro quo, and we sell it and split the proceeds or whatever at the end. And I kind of tend to go that way even still. I see what you are trying to do here. I think that has merit, certainly uses the building. It's not the best place in the world, obviously, for a fire station anymore, but, you know, if it comes down to it, it may be necessary. So I'm not totally in favor of just giving them the fire station, no.
Thank you. Counselor Payne?
Thank you. I think there was a seismic study done on the fire station, Station 1, a few years ago, and if I remember correctly, it was something like $4 million or something to retrofit it, and the value today is roughly $2 million. I can't read all exactly, but assuming that it has negative equity, but it's still a usable building for our citizens and for the benefit of our EMS personnel, I very adamantly say give it to them. The building and the land belongs to the citizens, and by way of their access to EMS services, in spite of not being the ideal location for sending out a ladder truck and a squad or, you know, a water tender, it doesn't make it an inconvenient place to send a medic out of or a command vehicle. So in the future, it very likely could remain a very usable building for a headquarter-type space where the fire marshal can continue operating out of or administration. Based on what I'm reading in the 269 ES, 269-page ESCI report, I very much feel like the new district would be taking on close to $10 million in negative equity with the, with all the apparatus that needs to be replaced within the next five years, how many tens of thousands of dollars that need to be done, updated in their SCBA masks. I don't even know how many tens of thousand dollar, tens of thousands of dollars in turnouts, you know, the appliances, the computers, their technology that are inside the apparatus in their comms room. You know, there's so many pieces to a station, and having just taken it to a public works today, I, it's really hard to assume that a building is going to be maintained consistently. You know, it just, and it's not anybody's fault, it's just something that happens. So if it goes with a district, that's on the district.
Remy, can I ask a follow-up question?
After Counselor, Counsel President Garvin has one more chance to recap, I did want to touch on the whole council. Do you have anything you'd like to add to your prior comments? Sure. Counselor Chenoweth?
Well, my follow-up is actually...
You guys make it rough on me sometimes, I got to tell you.
My follow-ups to Adam, so I'm going to make him talk anyways. I like the sound of Zach's idea of first right of refusal. How do you think that would play into this?
So I brought that up at the last meeting, and I still like the sound of it, but that would be more of a legal question for Walt or for Truman that's online about the feasibility of that. I don't know how that works in a public entity situation versus private parties.
It is a possible, it's a possibility, is what I would say. What I would also say is, and if the council is comfortable with the prior paragraph that you had in the resolution that you had before you previously, then you can pass this resolution with the substitution of that paragraph and go back to the formulaic, the formula that was contained in that, in that resolution, by simply substituting one paragraph for the other.
And if I remember correctly, the former paragraph demanded a sale at 10 years, and then that was...
No, it did not require a sale at 10 years. It said that, at that time, the district and city will determine if the station is still needed for emergency services. If not, the property may be sold, leased, or otherwise redeveloped. So it provided for, basically, a negotiation.
And with the lease redevelopment, et cetera, that is at the sole discretion of the district, or it sounded to me like that was the city and the district?
The way it was presented in the prior form of resolution, it was a jointly arrived-at determination.
And how were the assets distributed when that was jointly decided?
The last sentence of that paragraph says, "If the district still requires the station for emergency services, the existing lease will be extended." So the determination is one of whether or not the facility is still needed in order to provide the service. If that is the case, then the lease will be extended, and it doesn't say for how long, but it doesn't have a cutoff period either, so.
So I think my, what I'm trying to understand at this moment is, to me, this is not taking something away. This is changing the way that it's presented, but still giving the same value to the district. And what I'm hearing from my co-counselors is that they feel that this is taking value away from the district, and so that's what I, that's what I would like for you to, if you could address that.
Well, I would tell you that an appraiser, if looking at a building, was told that the, all of the beneficial use of the building for the next 100 years is going to be available to a buyer for $1, they would say that that buyer is obtaining 99.9999% of the entire value of the asset, if they have that control unilaterally, okay? If they don't have it unilaterally, it's different. It's a shared, it's a shared kind of asset in that sense. It's a shared, it's a shared kind of asset in that sense. So, it really is a question of control and who makes the decision ultimately. But this, the language that was in your prior version of this resolution essentially indicated that if the building was still needed for emergency services, the lease would be extended.
And if it was not...
That's the precondition, and so it just doesn't indicate, it just doesn't indicate who, that the district gets to make that decision unilaterally.
And if it was, if it was not, if we had, if we had a successful fire district and we had successfully built a facility that was not carrying tons of debt and did meet, you know, earthquake codes and was better functioning for firefighters to provide services...
Then that language provides that the property in that circumstance may be sold, redeveloped, or otherwise used.
And the district would split any sale development monies...
Fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty with the city.
Correct. That's the way it's currently phrased, I believe arising out of your last meeting.
I do not want to take any action that's going to harm the district moving forward. I just want to make sure that we're having clear conversation, because I at no time read this as taking anything away from the district, just reformatting how it was done. And so, that, I would, I'll throw that out. Counselor Chenoweth?
Well, again, my concern is if the rural district was expecting that the asset was going to be owned by the new district. I don't care what the language is now, I don't care what the language was in the previous resolution. If all the way up to this point, it was realistic that that would be their assumption, and we now say, "Nope, we're keeping half of it," or "Nope, we're keeping it all." What we're saying, the message we're delivering is going to create instability in the conversation. I would have a real problem with that if I was in that...
Well, what I'm questioning, though, is the way that you're painting that is not actually what I'm understanding. And I'm not saying I'm right and you're wrong, I'm just saying that what I'm understanding from this conversation is not that we've been saying, "You're going to have this asset." It's that you have the right to use this asset for 10 years, and after which time, however that asset is monetized, will be equally shared. And what I hear changing is that instead of saying that that will happen in 10 years, that that promise is still there for a longer period of time, but it's not, and please, if I'm misunderstanding, please let me know, but I am not hearing that we're saying, "This was going to be your asset, and now it's not." What I'm hearing is, this was going to be an asset that we then split the monetization of after 10 years, and now we're saying there's a 100-year timeframe.
I totally get what you're saying, but that was the point to my question to the chief, which is, was that asset considered part of all of the talking points up to this point that we have had with both departments? Was that asset in the formulation of what we were given them? I don't care what ordinances were brought before us, because that's at the end of this process. I'm talking about the discussion up to this point. If that asset was part of that discussion, to change it in our ordinances at the end is going to leave a, it's going to make this harder to sell. And if I was in the rural district's perspective, I would be uncomfortable with what else could change, even if we didn't actually, as a body up here, the city council, change it, because we only had the two ordinances that came before us. All of the discussions laid foundation for what the expectation was. And if that's what's in the documents, which I'm being told that's what's in the documents, is all the assets and liabilities of our department were in those documents, pulling one out at the end, I think could be problematic.
Chief, do you want to try to address that again with the question in front of you being, the documents, or Truman, would you be able to address that? Was there an expectation of 100% of ownership of this particular asset going into the district, or was there clarity, or was it discussed, I should say, that the asset was going into the district for a determined amount of time, but under co-ownership?
I don't know that Truman can answer that. That was done by the consultant group, ESCI, through their evaluations and phases, and all partners' assets and all partners' debts were considered transferred to the new, to the new ownership.
So, just to expand on that, I mean, you had Lafayette's brand-new substation that had a ton of debt, but even if they came onboard for the new fire district, that new district still wanted to absorb that, because building a station two years ago versus building a station at current construction cost was still a benefit to the district. And so, it didn't matter if you had a ton of debt or a ton of assets, everybody was just putting everything in, and then that new fire district board and the new admin was going to decide how resources get deployed out of those stations. With what we're left with, with McMinnville Fire and the rural fire district merging is we have one station in play, but it's still an asset that had been discussed for the four and a half years we've been dealing with this through ESCI, that it's an asset of the fire department and all assets and all liabilities, whether that's our $588,000 we still own apparatus, whether that's unfunded pers liability, whether that's a fire station that was built in 1986 and has a ton of deferred maintenance. All assets were supposed to be transferred through all the conversations and all the meetings I sat in over the last four and a half years. Then August, we had a meeting which had the first paragraph that Walt talked about, and then tonight, we have the meeting that has the second paragraph, that's what Walt has talked about. But before that August meeting, everything from a fire district consolidation standpoint was assets, liabilities, all go into one pot. Who's ever at the table is whose assets and whose liabilities are going into that pot. So, the drawback on the city fire station asset really came to public light in August. I do like Walt's second paragraph language. I do agree with you, Walt, that this is a way better language than the first paragraph, but because it puts all the control on the new fire district. But I still feel that through all the conversations that we had over four and a half years, it was always, you know, delineated that assets and liabilities go, not all your assets, but you get to pick one. You know, so now, we're trying to pick one, so the rural board says, "Well, we want to go back and revisit if we're going to pick one." And, you know, if we hold to what we've always planned on for the last four and a half years, I feel the rural board is going to come back at other meeting next week or the week after and say, "Yeah, we're still at the table with you."
So, the paragraph that was previously supplied, you're saying that that also doesn't hit on what you see as the goals of rural fire going forward?
That doesn't, that doesn't hit on all the conversations we had over four and a half years of what fire district consolidation looks like among the various partners. So, initially, that was everybody in the county, and then it came down to, was everybody West Valley, and then Dayton dropped out, then Harleton dropped out, Dundee dropped out, then Lafayette dropped out. And what we're left with is the rural fire district that contracts with an IGA, so they don't have a ton of assets. They have some apparatus they've helped us fund, and they have some savings they've set aside. But, you know, really, we're at the last minute talking about removing an asset from the conversation that we've included in that conversation for four and a half years.
And there's only a couple weeks to decide before we have to make a decision, I mean, because about, I mean, like...
So, going with the commissioner process first, the petition process of gathering signatures, we do have more time, but we don't have a ton of time. I mean, we really needed a decision tonight on the fire station, so the rural board can meet and see how they want to reallocate their assets, if they want to reallocate their assets. And then the commissioners need to do a 30-day notice, and Truman, you can correct me on this timeframe if I'm off, but they're going to have a public hearing, and then they have to have a second meeting, and then they send this to the ballot at the third meeting. And my whole goal of meeting with commissioners one-on-one and getting them on the table to do this with Union President Godfrey was that we could invest all this time and energy into public outreach and get polling questions in place by November and do polling by December. So, the farther we push this out, the farther we're going to be into that polling, which is the less amount of time we have for conversation to discuss what and when we're going to act on that $1.52, which is really the issue at hand with the citizens that are thinking about voting no on this fire district. Everybody's happy with what service levels they're going to get. What they're not happy with is, why is the city keeping the $1.50 when we have a new $2 fire district coming onboard? So, if we pump this another meeting, then that pushes the county commissioners into Thanksgiving break and Christmas, and now we're not getting that polling until January. So, now we have one less month of getting that conversation out, talking about it among us at the council level. And I really, truly hope we can stick to that polling timeframe of December, have that conversation, and that polling back in January, and be really in front of the voters from March forward on exactly where that $1.50 is going to go and how it's going to come back online and when it's going to come back online, and that's what's going to get us a successful vote in May. If we come to the citizens in April, two to three weeks before the vote, and say, "This is what we think we're going to do, but we're not really sure, because we're kind of rushing it at the last minute," I really have concern if it's going to pass or not.
Okay, so I'm generally, I'm hearing the same general sentiment. The hurdle that I see right now is that we don't have language before us that's proposed that is reflective of the direction the council is taking at this moment. If it's not this, if it's not this language and it's not the language that was included prior, then shall we pause and come back to this with some proposed language? I'm asking you, our city attorney.
Well, you can do one of two things. You can choose to put it on to your next meeting, October 11th, I believe, or you can adopt a revised paragraph tonight, pass the resolution, but change the language from the original resolution we received to read, "The city of McMinnville intends to convey all vehicles, equipment, supplies, fire department liabilities, and ambulance billing revenue involuntaries, LO SAP plans to the McMinnville Fire Department, as well as the real and, real property constituting the McMinnville Fire Station and the improvements located thereon." So, if you add that language, that would do what the council president is proposing and would effectively commit the city to transfer ownership of the fire station facility to the new district, along with other assets being transferred.
I hear, yes, Chief.
Walt, I just wanted to follow up for clarity purposes.
Please.
We still wouldn't be able to pass that resolution this evening, because we don't have the rural district's feedback for...
Well, you could pass a contingent upon their, you know, their acceptance of that language and the acceptance of the prior language. You might have to come back and repass it if they're not onboard with the other, with the other issue. But this council doesn't control the other issue.
Oh, I understood.
You can proceed, based on that, if the council wishes to do so tonight, and that throws the ball essentially to the, to the rural fire district board to determine whether they are prepared to support the language that relates to the use of the reserve funds for rural fire capital facilities.
Yes, so my concern with where we are right now is that it's very reactionary, that we had a reaction and that we are now reacting to that reaction. I hear your concerns, and I, and I, I'm not in any way dismissing them, and I also hear the tremendous pressure on the timeline and how that plays out. I am a staunch supporter of the fire district, and I don't want to do anything that gets in the way of moving it forward. I also don't want to put us in a position where we are reactive. And so, to take brand-new language here that hasn't been before us, and kind of with the more in-depth understanding that I believe some of us are coming to tonight about the, some additional layers of complexity around this, without wanting to delay the fire district, I would suggest that we do ask this to, the council have this come back one more time, so we have a little bit more opportunity to clarify language, to address the concerns that have come up tonight. This is a total change from the last time that we discussed this, and we were in agreement at that time. And I understand that as we get more information, as things come to light, that that informs our decision-making. So, I just want to pause us from doing anything reactionary, and give us a chance to respond and have a little bit more chance to think about it, knowing that you have a council here that supports this fire district, that wants to make sure that we move it forward in a healthy way. We want rural fire to come along with us and that does not forsake any of the efforts of council, staff, and the many advisors and our, and our firefighters who have brought us here. I know that, I know that delaying is not great. I don't see this as personally kicking the can down the road. I just, I was, you know, one of, one of the things we, we talk about here in attempting good governance a lot is to try not to surprise people. And I personally am surprised by some of this information tonight, and so I think that, you know, based on that, I think there are other counselors that are kind of surprised with seeing this inconsistency. So, sorry for saying the same thing a couple times, sometimes I do that. So, could I kind of get a look from the council about bringing this back next time, getting a chance to work through this a little bit more? I know it's not ideal.
And get some feedback from, from the rural fire district. It'd be kind of nice what their expectations were.
I'm sorry, Counselor.
Is there an opportunity between now and the next meeting to get some feedback from the rural fires?
Yeah, they've indicated they'd be willing to try and have a meeting next week.
Yeah, if the...
That would be very helpful. It'd be nice to have a representative here next time.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I actually think that you've hit on a pretty good solution, if it's something that others are supportive of. I think that the rural fire district had access to one version of language on this proposal. Walt has come up with a second version of language, and I'd like to get their, I think it's important to just get their feedback on the differences in those language to see if that makes the difference for them, because from my point of view, I was pretty persuaded by Walt's comments that most of the value in the asset, you know, would be transferred to them at a dollar per year for 100 years anyway. And then if the asset stops becoming something of value to the district, then it's no longer a value to the district. So, you know, I think that that would be something that probably should revert back to the city, just in part because of the relative value of the assets. And then secondarily, I guess, I'm just still struggling, because I feel like for quite a long time, the taxpayers in McMinnville have been subsidizing services for out of the area. So, it is a little frustrating for me to, you know, give up. I feel like we're giving up quite a bit, but anyway, so I do think that it is a good idea, just to get more information. If the rural fire district is open to the language in Walt's second proposal, then I actually think that might be a better fit for the district anyway, and they may come to that agreement. So, that's my view. I would like to, if we can hold it back for a second meeting, I'd be willing to come back for a special meeting if that's necessary to speed up the timeline. That's all I had, Mayor.
I would love to hear Adam's thoughts on delaying this.
We could always do a special meeting. I'm game for that, too.
I just, I just want to hear his perspective, because he's the one that's been in the midst of this, he knows where people are coming from.
I do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, not really up for delaying things, but I, I do get the value in giving people time to compartmentalize their thoughts and before we move forward on something. I think I've been pretty clear where I sit with it, but, and I, my read of the room of the last rural board meeting I attended, I'm pretty confident in where they're going to sit with it, but I think the issue that we could run into and likely will run into is the rural board will say, "We already committed to move all our assets over, and you guys are now wiggling on moving all your assets over, so we're not going to commit to moving forward until you guys actually commit to what you're going to do."
So, I guess with that response... So I guess with that response, I would say I'm ready to move forward tonight.
So, Adam, you, you don't see a difference in the two, like a substantive difference in the two proposals?
Oh, no, I definitely do. I, I think Walt's language in the second paragraph is tremendously more in favor of the district, but it's still not, not to the level that it's been at for four and a half years of conversation, and not what it was at when they voted to move all their assets over at their last rural fire board meeting.
So, so you feel that that, that that's not sufficient to meet their, their, what it is that they want, and that it's not even worth asking the question at their next meeting in one week?
Of at least two of their board members? Yes.
I feel like it's wise of the relationship to make a decision tonight, personally. I mean, but I've also lived through, I lived through three years of a 190 that didn't work out. So my perspective is a little bit different as well because I literally lived with my husband being part of a 190 that didn't work out where this conversation happened at every board meeting. What are you gonna give? What are you gonna give? What are you gonna give? And if there's, even if there's the assumption that Station One was going to go for four years, and it was based on the fact that Station was, was included in a feasibility study with Amity and Dayton and Lafayette, et cetera, nobody ever said it wasn't so until August. And it's still, the district is still for the benefit of the citizens, and that means Station One going with the district or proposed district is still in the benefit, for the benefit of the citizens.
And for clarity of other counselors, the 190 Jessica's mentioning is the southwest pole, West Valley, and Sheridan, and how none of their three boards could commit to a decision. They just kept punting the decision around the room to each other's board meetings, and then it eventually disbanded. And then you had Willamino without any service level representation until the tribal grand round stepped up on a one-year agreement.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Fire Chief Rich Leifert.
Mayor, one of the, in my telephone conversations with the chairman today, he apologized for not being able to be here tonight from the rural board. He's out of town. He, he indicated that the new language he, he was not a fan of. He did not say it was a deal breaker. He said he was not a fan of it, and he also said that he would be, like to have more dialogue with the city on what that looked like and what that meant specifically.
And was that in reference to the language that's in our packet tonight or the language from last August?
In the packet from, from tonight.
From tonight. And were you able to have any conversation following the August language? So in the, in the last month, was he able to respond to that at all?
In, in the language of the shared?
Yeah, the shared, the shared language from August.
He, he was not negative about that language, but I, I don't know if that was a deal breaker either.
Okay. Counselor Mankey, sorry?
You know, I look at this, and I, I actually would think that he would have approved of the, the last language in August, probably, because basically it says what this says, but in the end, they're gonna get fifty-fifty because the fact remains that the land is worth quite a bit of money regardless of what happens to the building. And it will sell for something that would help the fire district tremendously. A part of me says, you know, really, if we're in this, we're all in it, and we probably should give up the building and the land. It's really hard to do, having seen the other paragraphs, but I probably could vote for it tonight.
Yeah, I can get there, too. I, you know, it's just too big of a deal for the city to, to allow it to get to loggerheads, even though the value of the land is, is significant. So I, I can get there on the, on the new proposed language as well.
Mayor, what if the, what if the direction was to staff to draft official language, and that's, you know, consensus from us, consent, official language to transfer the asset over, sort of formalizing what Walt had said? That codifies our direction to look at that language. It allows these guys to, to have that discussion with the rural board next week with direction that we're moving towards there with official language. Doesn't, doesn't mean we're sort of writing legal agreements on the dais over the course of half hour, which I understand and appreciate and share some concerned or, concern with. And then whether, on timeline, whether or not we need a special meeting, or that allows that, that familiarity and comfort after that discussion next week allows it to move forward. I would just take Adam's direction on what that does for the timeline. But if we move here tonight with official, you know, direction on official language to come back to us to transfer the asset over in the agreement, does that allow you guys to have a hearty enough discussion? And then what do we need to do to keep it moving forward?
Yeah, I think if we, you know, had a consensus that we're transferring the asset and whole, and Walt could come back with official language, that gives enough meat on the bone to have the discussion next week with the rural board. And as far as timing goes, I mean, we are already gonna have this resolution vote at, we had to pause it until the rural board comes to their decision anyways, so we're already gonna officially vote on the resolution the first meeting in October. So from my understanding, and Truman can correct me or Walt, I don't think that would move our timeframe, providing, correct me, if, if it's not unanimous, do we have to go to a second meeting?
No, this is a resolution, not an ordinance.
Okay, so, yeah, I don't think it moves, moves the timing. The only thing that would move the timing is then if we came back at that October meeting and you wanted to reinvent the wheel again. I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm, all in all, I'm ready to vote on it tonight, but I think us giving an official nod that direct staff, i.e. Walt and Rich, to come back with official language that's clean, and we're not having Walt chicken-scratch something on his note paper over there.
Yeah, and part of my discomfort, of course, is that we were saying there was a last-minute change in August, but there was a change in August that we got no negative feedback on. We then, all of us said, well, let's, let's do this other shift on that language, and we could've accepted that language at that time, and that seemed to be acceptable language to move the conversations forward. And now we're saying, no, we're gonna strike even that as opposed to coming back with options. I, I understand chasing things board to board to board. Also, you know, I mean, this is a, this is, this is a huge and very important decision, and, and I don't, I'm not encouraging council to rush that, and we seem to have a, a last-minute change in information, right? So we understood that the Rural Fire District was supportive of the language last time. No, there was no hesitancy.
No indication otherwise.
Yeah, there was no indication.
Just because they didn't know about it yet.
Well, but we haven't heard anything until this new language. You see what I'm saying? So there, so if we're hearing we didn't get any negative feedback on the old language, and then we presented new language, and now we're getting negative feedback, but what the suggestions are being made, that's being made is to say, no, we don't even go back to that language. We actually write completely new language, but it doesn't seem as though there was problem with the language that was before us in August. Well, sure, however, nobody here has heard that, that's, that's being reported that there was problems with that language. So you can say it seems, but I don't know. Were you contacted by somebody that said the language in August?
I'm saying that we have no way of knowing whether they were okay with that first one or not. We're making the assumption because we didn't hear anything until now, or, or, you know, from Adam's...
Why should that push us necessarily into action tonight? I think we...
Agreed. I'm, like I already said, I'm willing to, if, if Adam feels like that it's not gonna mess up our timeline, I'm fine with that.
I don't see how two weeks is gonna put that big a rock in it.
Us taking official direction with staff to move the asset and whole would give the rural district direction on, for their meeting on what, what our intention is and what we're gonna do. So we don't have to officially vote on the resolution tonight, contention on their, them not changing any of their assets. We can say this is where we're at, this is our line in the sand, and we're gonna transfer all our assets, let them have their meeting, make sure they're still gonna transfer all their assets. Then we can vote on the official resolution on our October 11th meeting, which is already what we're gonna have to do because at 3:00 PM today, the rural board said we're still looking at moving around some of our assets from some of your guys' discussions. And so right now, we, we can't pass it and put it to the county commissioners as it is. So us giving staff direction tonight is what the fire chief asked for. I think I've got some head nods from Walt that us giving direction would be sufficient from his legal perspective. And so, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna make a, I would rather not make a motion to vote on this resolution, contention on them not changing anything. I would like to make a motion that, or entertain, however you wanna do that, that we take, you know, give staff direction to bring back transferring the asset and whole.
Are you, are you making that motion, Counselor Graham?
Are there any other counselors that would like to discuss anything at this time regarding this? Counselor Mankey?
I'm not, I just feel like we've been put in a really impossible position tonight with very little information up front. And quite honestly, I'm looking at the chief, too, on this one. So I, I feel like possibly we should come back with two possible motions. We should get feedback from the fire, Rural Fire District and make a decision at the next meeting. Like I say, I'm not unsayable either way, but I just feel like that I have been pushed really hard tonight, and it really irritates me.
So I, I hear two things, and I'm not really sure where consensus exactly lies because there's been some back and forth. So I hear either come back with clear language of transferring the asset that would be brand-new language that we haven't heard before, or B, come, give the direction to come back with an option between two, which is this transfer of assets, or is the original language that was in the August resolution. And I know, I know where Council President and Counselor Chenoweth clearly lie, that they, that they're ready to bring this to a vote tonight, including this full asset transference language. Counselor Payne, I believe what I'm hearing from you is that you are on the same, that same, okay, direction. And then Counselor Geary, I'm not quite clear, your, and your suggestion was similarly to give asset transference language to, to be included. I'm trying to make sure I have everybody's thoughts correct here so I don't speak out of turn.
Yeah, my position was to give staff direction to draft that language, to transfer the ordinance, or transfer the asset in tot, in total, and bring that back to us next meeting, that one and only option. In the meantime, they would use that to run that by the rural board.
Point of clarification?
Yes, please, Counselor Peralta.
Isn't that the same thing that Adam was saying as well? So it, it seems to me, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but it seems to me that what Zach is saying is pretty much the same thing Adam was saying, that we should give direction to come back with a full transference amendment in two weeks, and that's the direction we're gonna give to staff, and then Adam can take that to the rural board and let them know what our direction is, and then we can see what they do, and then we have an opportunity to vote on the full transference the week after. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Counselor.
I guess just to complete the thought, if that's, if that's where both Adam and Zach, if that's what you were suggesting, I, I'm, I think I'm onboard with that as well.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to direct staff to bring back language to fully transfer all McMinnville Fire Department assets, to include all real property assets, not limited to anything, including the full Station One land and building.
Second.
All those in favor?
All real property assets or just the, you're including the, the fire tower?
Yeah.
As well?
Oh, no, the, the fire tower's staying at that, that dollar a year.
Just Station One.
So just Station One?
Station One.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, I'm sorry, so I'm, this is adding to my confusion, though, because what I just heard you say was the whole conversation has been every single asset, City of McMinnville, and then the conversation became focused on Fire Station One. But now what you're saying is no, it will include Fire Station One but doesn't truly contain all assets. I, I don't wanna end up in a, I don't wanna say, you know, here, we're doing all this, and, right, I mean, do you hear what I'm trying to, trying to get at? And personally, I don't think it's wise to, to enter an agreement that doesn't give the district flexibility with the city on an entire city block in downtown McMinnville. I, I, I think that we can give them all the value of that asset without turning that asset over in its entirety. It is an entire city block in downtown McMinnville that a hundred years from now, or ten years from now, many different ways could, could be used for lots of, of different things, and, and we could share the value of it. We could, that, the intent of putting all of the value of the asset into the district does not have to go away. So I'm, I'm now confused because now we're pulling out a different asset as we're trying to revise this language from the dais, which I extremely very much dislike, that we are, that, that, that's the direction that we're going as opposed to having time with language to read it, reflect on it, conversate with it, check with our fire chief and our, our other advisors. And, and that makes me very nervous that we are continuing to be reactive. Truman, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the council, city staff. I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity to work on this project. The chief's been very diligent in trying to shepherd this through. It's been a pleasure to work with Mr. Gallow. This is a big project, and we've divvied up the work. And so I haven't been part of this. It's in Mr. Gallow's able hands. And so I don't wanna throw confusion or kinda intrude into this, but there is, there is a bit of an obscure statute that I think is important to point out so that there isn't something new that pops up that makes people think that, you know, somebody's changing the terms or hiding the ball again. And I, I was looking for it, and so, and I was having a difficult time locating it. So I'm gonna tell you what my memory is, but realize that this may not be completely accurate. But there is a statute that says when public real property is transferred between governmental agencies, it can be transferred only for a public purpose, and that public purpose has to be maintained for twenty-year time period. If that public purpose is not maintained for a full twenty years, then the property reverts back to the governmental agency that transferred it. So just realize that if the city intends to deed the fire station to the newly formed district, it will, by statutory necessity, include a provision that says that if the new fire district does not use it for public purposes for that full twenty years, the city would come back into possession of the property.
And, mayor, I would concur. That's a statutory reversion procedure that's required for all public entity real property transfers. And it goes without saying that if that asset is transferred, it's gonna have to be subject to that statute.
And, and if I could also just provide a little context, so we, we ran into... And, and if I could also just provide a little context, so we, we ran into very similar conversations when City of Newburgh annexed into Twalton Valley Fire, and so, the City of Newburgh had two fire stations, the one on Springbrook Road, um, the county had actually given most of that land to the city, so there was a revisionary interest in that deed, and then when the city transferred it to TVFNR, you know, it would, if TVFNR doesn't use it, it'd go back to the city, if the city doesn't use it for a public purpose, it would go back to the county, you know, depending on the timing. So, it was kinda this comp, you know, a little complexity in there. The downtown fire station, though, uh, the city determined that it might have some future use, uh, for that property, and so, it was leased to the Twalton Valley on a hundred-year kind of lease, uh, so long as they wanted to use it for a fire station, and as Mr. Gallow said, a hundred-year lease is essentially a transfer of the property, with the only exception being that you can't just outright sell it to a third party. And so, uh, it, in my mind, and, and I agree with Mr. Gallow, that a hundred-year lease, especially at such favorable terms, is the functional equivalent of a ha, an actual transfer of that property. So, you might consider that. Um, and then I had another point that's now escaping my mind, um, but thank you, thank you again for, um, the opportunity to speak. So, I know what it was. To answer, uh, Councilor Gavin's question about timing, i, if this gets pushed two weeks, we're still in good shape, uh, but we don't wanna go much past that.
Thank you. Councilor Chenoweth, I saw you had something to add.
I just gonna say we have a motion on the floor.
Doing, council discussion is absolutely acceptable after there's a motion on the floor, thank you. Does anybody have any additional discussion?
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, thank you.
Is there any additional discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that we include the statement from August.
I'll need, um, advice on, uh, a correct order if that's going to be suggested, suggested. Uh, Mr. Gallow?
Can I make a motion to amend that, to include another statement?
That, yes, that is a proper, proper motion, it would require a second, and approval.
Which may be hard to get here, but I still make it, uh, with your, I believe the wording of tonight seems to be the appropriate one.
All right, so what's the, what is your recommended amendment to the motion on the floor? I'm sorry, I don't...
Unfortunately, my computer isn't working real well tonight, but let me see if I can find it on here again. Okay. It would read something to the effect that the City of McMinnville intends, upon formation of the McMinnville Fire District, to lease the existing Fire District, uh, main station to the McMinnville Fire District for a dollar per year, for a minimum of ten years, whereupon, at that time, McMinnville Fire District will determine if the entire fire station is still needed by the Fire District for emergency service. Uh, if the district determines that it will require the action of emergency services, the Fire District will have the option to extend the lease for an additional, additional increments of ten years each, not to exceed a total lease term of one hundred years. The City of McMinnville additionally intends to lease the existing McMinnville Fire District, or Fire Department training area, to, I don't know if we wanna even entertain that, but, to the City of McMinnville District for one dollar per year for one hundred years. And, sorry, I think that's it.
So, your amendment is to, to, to use the...
To use the language as presented tonight.
To use the language as presented tonight.
Yes.
As a second option, right?
As a second option. Just a second option.
Okay, so, the original motion that's on the floor is to, uh, send this back to staff, um, saying that it will be signed off with any new language that says a transference of, uh, of the asset, uh, option, the, the amended motion that's on the floor but is not yet seconded, is to say to send this back to staff with either, um, uh, the first motion language and inclusive of the language that's in this packet.
Right, so that there'll be two options to vote on next time.
Okay, and I don't hear a second, so I do not, uh, we do not have an amended language, and...
Are we back in discussion on the original motion?
We can be back in discussion on the original motion.
Sorry, uh, Adam, can you comment on the idea that, uh, initial discussion was everything to the district, and then the late, the, the change of still retaining in the lease capacity while for a hundred years, very sweetheart deal, the drill tower, and not doing all is all? All assets are all assets?
Um, yeah, I mean, we can do all assets is all assets, definitely, but I haven't, um, you know, as far as comparing the asset of the fire station and the land there versus the drill tower, I haven't gotten any feedback from the Rule Board that they're caught up on the, on the drill tower aspect of it.
Well, the Councilor Peralta?
What's the, um, what's the relative, I mean, this is a pretty straightforward question, but we may not have the answer to it. What's the relative value of the total assets held by the rural district versus that fire station and, and the land underneath it?
Go ahead, Adam.
I think the, I'll let Chief speak to that, the hard numbers of their current assets in hand, but I think the real asset is you're bringing in the tax base, and you're bringing them up from their current rate to two dollars in the service level, that it's gonna move the needle for all the citizens in the city and the rural district. But if you wanted to compare balance sheets, they're, they're gonna be a lot less equipped on the dated high-mileage equipment apparatus that we have from a city perspective, but they're also gonna have no debt and quite a bit of cash in the reserve bank, so...
Well, that, that was my question, is like, how much are we, like, if, if they were to go forward with the district but without transferring some of the assets because we're doing this as a lease, how much are we actually giving up?
Could you, could you reframe that?
You know, I mean, 'cause I feel, well, I mean, so, my feeling is a city block is worth a heck of a lot of money, and if the Fire District's saying, you know, we're not gonna transfer this portion of the cash, and I don't know what they would do with it and otherwise, but, you know, they're not gonna transfer this piece or that piece, what are we giving, but they're still gonna go forward with the district, what are we actually giving up at that point, relative, you know, if we were to compare the value of, of the land and the fire station versus whatever asset that they choose not to bring into the agreement?
The actual cash reserves that they have on hand, is that what you're asking, Councilor?
Yeah, and any other assets that are of value that they might not bring in. And then, the second question would be, what would be the lawful uses of the cash reserve for the Fire District if they didn't bring them into another type of district like that?
I, I can't answer the lawful uses, um, I'll defer to the attorney on that, but I can tell you that the, the current cash, um, reserves that they're carrying in the bank, aside from their operating expenses, is about eight-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm, it's a lot of money.
And so, if you go back to their Rule Board meeting, uh, June, I believe, maybe it was July, but I think it was June, to get them to a, a yes vote in that board meeting to move forward with districting with us, was they wanted their rural taxpayer dollars earmarked for rural capital outlay, so basically a substation that benefits the rural citizens that have built up that cash reserve. So, I don't think the question is fully just, what are they gonna do with their assets? I think the question is, do they even wanna still be at the table?
And can you speak to the, um, concern over entrusting an asset for an elongated period of time, whichever, what, ten, twenty, forty, fifty, a hundred years, and the promise of sharing, uh, so, so giving, giving the asset fully for use, and then sharing any potential revenues at the end of that time? How, uh, how does that, uh, because if this evaluation is based on our, our current assets, and it was not, it, there was no, um, accounting for what is the value of that land a hundred years from now, so if the promise going forward is, is still of, of sharing in that value at the end of a time of use, um, can you explain to me why you see that as being, uh, uh, different, or a negative, or why it's not meeting the intent, um, or, or how that is in, in some way? If you're saying we will still give you the full value of this asset, uh, can you explain why that, you, you see that as being so detrimental to the district moving forward? Because I see the, I, I see the, I, I understand what you're saying, that we've been saying the full value of our assets, and our, and our assets have been evaluated, and then that is the value we are bringing to the table, and each asset has its, its highs and its lows, right? So, what we're really talking about is the ground underneath the fire station, and, uh, because there hasn't been a determined endpoint, we don't really know what the value of that land will be, uh, at the end of whatever agreement we come to, because there's not an agreement, so, uh, how do you see that protecting, um, citizens of McMinnville and protecting the Fire District, which I would think, you know, in a hundred years, or, or in many years from now, um, that district would need to be self-sustaining, and in the potential sale or redevelopment of a downtown property, if they got fifty percent of the share of that, um, and use of the asset for essentially no money in the interim, how, how is that reflected back as a negative? Or, or how is that not being true to the intent that was put forward up until this
I'll do my best.
Okay, great.
Um, so that, the way I've interpreted through the four and a half years of conversation, and the way it's been conveyed, uh, to me by a few Rule Board members, is that, you know, you look at the City of McMinnville Fire District balance sheet, and, and asset on there is not just the fire station building, but it's also the land that's incorporated with it, and so, when you just give them a lease, you're removing any, any real value, and they wanna move out of that building and sell that building to build their new substation, or their new administrative offices, and, and large home base for their, their engines that, you know, aren't in their substations in that apparatus, and so, you're really asking to back out a few million dollars of today's dollars, uh, from the sustainability of, of that Fire District. So, when we came up with that two dollars per thousand rate through our ESCI studies, the, the main attractive piece of that versus a dollar eighty is that we would not need to go out for an operating levy for a number of years, and when you back out that, that real estate asset, you now are short that money, uh, that you're gonna need to, to use to build, build stations down the road, and, so, is there value in them being able to operate it for practically maintenance costs, which are a few hundred thousand dollars a year? Yeah, there's, there's definitely value there, but is it the same value that was talked about for four and a half years to move forward? No, I don't feel it's the same value.
Could I say something? Because this is exactly the question I asked the Chief last time. I said, is this part of the deal, that you're gonna, expecting these dollars to come to you after ten years because you need to build other fire stations? I did ask this, right, Chief?
I'm sorry?
I did ask you last time, is this part of, not necessarily part of the deal, but are you expecting this money to help build your fire stations? And you gave me a rather dismissive answer that, you know, well, we always need money, but you didn't. I just don't understand, you know, why this is a conversation we're having at this point in time. It should've been had a long time ago.
Councilor, direct your comments to me, please.
I, I just am concerned, uh, you know, if, if this truly is part of the deal, then fine, it should've been made clear a long time ago, and I, I guess maybe we should've asked.
Can I?
Councilor Chenoweth?
Thank you. Um, I would, I would, I think part of the answer to Adam's question would be, the fact that we're fighting so hard to keep it, for some of us, indicates we understand there's value at the end of the lease, um, and it's, that value is to us, and it's to them. So, pretending like that that value at the end of the lease wouldn't exist, that somehow they've gotten all...
No, I'm, I'm not saying it doesn't...
I'm just answering Remy, I'm talking to Remy. Um, saying that that value at the end of the hundred-year lease doesn't exist, that they've gotten all the value, when we're willing to fight to try to keep it, um, we're, we're admitting in the fight that we obviously see a value there. Um, so that'd be one thing I would say. The other thing that I thought was really interesting, and I hadn't considered it until, um, Counselor Payne made the comment, um, is that we're acting as if the district is not going to be the citizens' interest, and the district is still the citizens' interest. So, transferring the asset from the City of McMinnville to the district is not taking the interest that belongs to the citizens away from the citizens. It's still going to the citizens, one way or another. We're not taking it from the citizens, we're just saying who has the right to control that asset. Um, and it's, but at the end of the day, the Fire District is there for the citizens too. So, I, I don't see that as we're removing it from one to another, and I appreciate you making that comment.
Thank you. Any additional council discussion?
Uh, just one last comment. I mean, honestly, I don't feel that transferring the fire station is a, is a great deal for the city. However, I think when you look at the overall framework of getting the Fire District created, um, getting that tax base shifted, et cetera, to me, that just outweighs the, the cash value of the land, and, you know, although I'd like to get a better deal, um, I, I would, and I think we probably could, given time, I also think that there's an element of being kinda penny-wise and pound foolish, um, just because the, the total dollars on the other side of, of, uh, of going forward with the district is, you know, just so, so strongly in the city's long-term interest, and in the long-term interests of, of the public. I think what I'm kinda struggling with is that, is that it is an asset of the city, and, and, and it does have a cash value in addition to its use value, and so, providing the use value to the Fire District for a hundred years seems very generous, and yet, at the same time, reserving the, the, the public land for future use by the citizens of McMinnville, who, um, you know, put into it would be my, my first choice, but, you know, again, the, the real goal here is to go forward with a Fire District in, in coordination, and in something like that, you know, some partners just give up more, um, in order to go, go forward together, and I think that, you know, I, I'm at the place where I'm prepared to do it, even if I'm not completely thrilled about it.
Okay, any additional comments?
We have a motion on the table.
Yes, any other discussion before I call for a vote? Okay, we have a motion, uh, by Counselor Garvin, and a second by Counselor Chenoweth. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. We will now go to ordinances to consider the first reading with the possible second reading of Ordinance Number 5124. Uh, does any, or, does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? We'll now consider the matter of Ordinance 5124. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will our interim city attorney, Walt Gallow, please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance Number 5124, and ordinance amending Section 3 of Ordinance 5119, declaring a... a temporary ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products, referring such ordinance to the voters and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion? I'm not hearing any, I would ask for a motion to pass ordinance 5124 to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Payne, and a second by Council President Garvin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The...
Ordinance number 5124, ordinance amending section three of ordinance 5119, declaring a temporary ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products, referring such ordinance to the voters and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Do I need to, do we need to poll the council, or do I need to read it again? Poll the council?
Poll the council.
Ms. Snaros, will you please poll the council?
Can you ask for a motion to adopt?
Oh, yes.
So moved.
The motion from Counselor Chenoweth, and a second from Counselor Manke, and we'll now poll the council.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor, Counselor Manke?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
And Council President Garvin?
Aye.
And ordinance number 5124 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. We'll now consider the first reading with the possible second reading of ordinance number 5125. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves? We'll now consider the matter of ordinance 5125. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will our interim city attorney Walt Gallow please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 5125, an ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Zipley Fiber Northwest LLC grantee or franchisee.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion? I'd ask for a motion to pass ordinance 5125 to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Manke, and a second by Counselor Chenoweth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. All right, a motion has passed unanimously. We now have ordinance number 5125, read by title only.
Ordinance number 5125, an ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Zipley Fiber Northwest LLC or grantee or franchisee.
And ask for a motion to adopt ordinance 5125.
So moved.
I have a motion by Counselor Payne.
Second.
And a second by Counselor Manke. And will the city recorder please poll the council?
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Manke?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
And ordinance five...
Council President Garvin?
Aye.
And ordinance number 5125 is adopted by a vote of six to zero, and I'll now adjourn the meeting at 9:53 PM.